All right. Call the meeting to order June 7th, 2023, 6 o'clock for the planning board meeting. My name is Stephanie Slush. I'm the chair of the planning board. I, to my right, I have John Jeffries. To my left, I have Lee Bell. We're on board as well. We have two of our board members joining us remotely. We have Mike Poschek. Mike, can you say you're here for the record?
Hello.
And we have Jimmy Tar, the alternate chair, who's here virtually as well. Jimmy, can you say hello?
Hi, everybody. Hi, everybody. I'm here.
Thanks. And then we have our assistant town planner, Janelle Franklin, and we have our administrative assistant, Gerard Boynow. So the first piece of the agenda as always is public forum. This is opportunity for the public to speak on items not related to the agenda. However, I will just want everyone to know that we have closed the public comment sections of the hotel project at 16 West Street and the continued hearing for the storage unit place on 12 and 18 Elm Street. So that means that there won't be conversation with the public during that agenda item. So if you would like to speak on any of those issues, now would be the time to make your public comments known. And during this public comment session, we don't really go on a back and forth. It's we take your, the information, your comments, and consider them with making our decision. So this is, again, the public forum opportunity. So if anyone in the audience would like to come forward and bring forth something either not on the agenda, bring it to our attention, or anything related to 16 West Street or 12 and 18 Elm Street, now is your time to speak. Yes, please, yeah, come and sit down and introduce yourself, please, for the record.
Yeah, my name is Scott Faniff. I'm here due to four Elm Street that abuts the property, and we're kind of working with him. Hopefully, he's going to give us a plan that will work out for the drainage and the water runoff.
Yeah, anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Please make your way to the front so we can get you on the microphone, too.
Hello. I'm Lexi Peacock. I'm at 8 Elm Street, also commenting on the 12 Elm Street property. We have also had drainage issues into our yard that we've also been speaking with them about. I know that the plans originally had all of the drainage issues on the north side of the property, so I just wanted to flag that we're having drainage issues on the south side of the property in addition to the drainage issues that the Faniffs are having. I had also reread the plans and saw that it was specifically noted that all storage would be inside of storage units. So I just wanted to, I assume this will change with new management going forward, but currently there are RVs and trailers that get parked along our fence line between 12 Elm and 8 Elm. There's usually three or four, particularly during the winter season. There's one there currently, so I just wanted to flag that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak on either of those two agenda items? Because those, like I mentioned, there's not opportunity for a public discussion during, for those parts on the agenda. Yes, please.
Dave Donis, like 14 Elm Street. What is going on with the project? Like, are they going to put a barrier up there so we don't have to be looking at all those sheds? And how are we supposed to know what's actually your approving or?
Yeah, so we continued the hearing from last time. So this is, because we were waiting to hear. So you'll learn more tonight, and hopefully that they'll be, we're not, it'll be all transparent and all decided at these meetings.
Will we have any more say in it, or is this?
This is an opportunity for you to, like, this public comment period is a time for you to make anything now.
No, that's all I can say.
Okay, thank you.
May I just ask, is your, is your primary concern the aesthetic to the neighborhood? Is it, or?
Two, and the street's already so busy, and you're going to have all that extra, plus it's going to be a loop around now. He says that other driveway is not going to be used very much, but I don't believe that. You know, they'll just drive in. They're already driving in there at 10, 11 o'clock at night. I see cars going in, or I don't know what they're doing, but.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Benson, 18 Elm Street. My concern is that if this happens, there's going to be so much traffic, day and night, going in and around. It's going to affect about eight houses in all of other people, you know, outside of what the business. And I just think it wouldn't be right for the neighborhood. I think that the master plan for their town is trying to protect the neighborhoods. And, you know, this is a type of a business which I think it's great. It should be in an industrial park. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? All right, oh, yeah.
Hi, Susan Kugler, 5 Bridge Street. And I just don't think this project belongs where they want to put it. It's a historic district. It's going to be an eyesore, full of traffic, as has been previously stated. There's enough traffic on Elm Street now, and then now it's going to be 24/7. There's going to be lights. It's just not the place for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Public forum? Not? How we can move on from public forum to move on to our formal discussions, opposing public forum? The first one is the proposed hotel at 16 West Street.
Jeff Squire from Berkshire Design Group. Yeah, just to recap, I think there were a handful of items that the board had asked for last time, which had included some additional screening behind the storage, two storage buildings, some additional landscaping up along the front, and then a photometric plan that was also included with the latest submission.
Photometric meaning lighting?
Lighting, yes. Yep, yep, I'm sorry. And then some changes. So there was lighting information that was provided, and then there's some changes to the architectural elevations as well. So all those have been submitted and none of the other issues or concerns.
Okay. And yeah, this was mostly us. And yes, we, I think we all agree that those were, you know, worthy additions.
Cover the basis.
Yep, covered that. And we were just basically wanted just advice from our council with thinking about conditions to kind of address some of the potential concerns about, about this potentially being an extended stay place and wanting it to be a place that would bring the types of tourism and people that would be coming and using a hotel like it would be. So from that, I think we have recommended language on how we proceed. And I think it's also kind of where Mr. Patel was, was thought, I think, would be agreeable to him as well. Is basic, the specific language I think we were looking at is make, is conditioning it that it wouldn't be anyone's permanent residence. But passing the updated plans with the, with what you most recently presented to us with that condition.
Contingent of all that language.
Sure, yeah. I know, I know the intention is not to make it an extended, extended stay hotel, so I'm sure, you know, whatever we can provide to satisfy that.
Yeah, it just gives, you know, the zoning enforcement officer teeth if that ever be, does become an issue.
Yeah, absolutely.
And yeah, and with this vote, I think, Mike, I don't think you can vote on this, but if we're ever ready to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we, that we pass this, the special permit for 16 West Street with the stipulation that the hotel be not have rooms as primary residence for the renters.
The occupants, yeah.
Or occupants.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 That passes, and. Thanks. And we're excited to see this.
Thank you. Yeah, I think he'll be very happy, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to, there's two parts to this 12 and 18 Elm Street discussion. The first one was guidance from town council about how we didn't vote on making this a pre-existing non-conforming use when we voted on allow, on the A and R last time. And so there's, we need a vote on allowing that. And then the continued hearing about any updates on the part, on the project itself is the second agenda piece. So, Janelle, if you want to.
Yeah, and additionally, we're going to extend the non-conforming use. As it stands right now, parcel four is a parcel without frontage, so it needs to be adjoined to 12 Elm.
So what we voted on last time was just to make that a separate, basically to siphon off the back and the front part of parcel 18?
Yep.
Even though the language said we were.
Yes, so in the, in the notes, it says parcel four is to be combined with Benson Mini Storage LLC to form one continuous parcel of land, but town council has informed us that that would have to be another step. So, which we are thinking, or could possibly be done with Form A, the A and R Form A, so we can talk about.
And this, we just, this has all come up in the last couple of days. There's a lot of moving parts with this, as we all have figured out as we've gone along in this, between conservation, the previous separation of the parcels and all that, so.
And just so I can understand, although I'm not disputing anything, it's just that the, the non-conforming component of it is, and that's primarily due to the frontage?
Yes, it's a frontage concern.
Gotcha.
Yeah, because if you were making it a conform, if you're adding the required amount of frontage to 200, to make it 200 feet, then we wouldn't have to do that part.
Right. Yeah, and I guess one discussion we were having internally today with our survey team was just that the fact that, you know, there isn't even enough frontage here to get legal frontage for, you know, for two lots. There's only enough for one anyway, so one is going to be, you know, one is going to be non-conforming regardless of what, what you do to it. Yeah, it's a, it's a town council type of issue.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so it's one of those things that, I don't know if, because we just got this information within the last, since like Friday, really.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts here. And so I guess, I guess my thought is that moving forward quickly isn't in anyone's best interest on this. I mean, we, at the last meeting, we voted, we voted on what I thought was to combine the lot to the non-conforming. And apparently that wasn't the case. Apparently, we just created a floating lot. So that lot still needs to be combined before anything could happen. I know that.
And with that, and with that combining, we could then vote on the non-conforming use part?
Well, then we can, then we can get to, yeah, then we can get to that. I mean, I think we'd have to get to the, again, we have to get these, these combined because that's our first, in my opinion, I mean, I don't.
That's what we thought we did.
Right.
We thought we did.
We have to get to that step. And there's so many moving parts in this, and we are just getting, we're just getting advice from legal on what's, on what's going on with this. And it's an interesting, it's an interesting case in stretching the, the non-conforming use to that property. And this, admittedly, this is new to us, and we don't want to err. There's, there's strong argument here that this is a, that this is a good fit for this site if we can keep the concerns of the residents in, in our mind, you know, given the fact, and I, and the concerns with, with the, with the master plan and the fact that this is an industrial spot stuck in the middle of, of a residence is of course not lost on us. Again, it's an, it's an industrial site, and we have to, we have to bear that, too. So there's so many moving parts here that personally, I don't feel comfortable making a decision. I mean, I think that if I were to err on the side of caution, I would currently err against it just because of that. So my, my thought is that I would like to give ourselves a little bit of breathing room on this and, and push this meeting to our next meeting, which would still, and we're going to try to get that meeting within the 90 days that we have to work to act, to have, to make action on this.
Even though it's, yeah, and that's separate, right? So the A and R thing is separate then. I mean, doing these at the same time is kind of made, made it kind of complicated on, on all of us.
And again, just for the sake of debate, you know, as part of the conversation, you know, one of, one of the arguments that we had, you know, sort of hypothesized in the office is that, you know, that it's, these are, these are both industrially zoned parcels. So self-storage is an allowed use. So the only extension of nonconformance is increasing that lot size. Nothing else has changed. The, the use is allowed, the setbacks are met, all of those other.
You got a non-conforming lot, and you're proposing to add to it. So it's like increasing.
Right.
So that's, I guess that's debate, is that?
Right.
Now, the question, now the question is, is building on that lot making it less non-conforming at that point? So that, I'm saying, there's so, there's so much gray going on here that I don't want to rush into a judgment on this.
That it's, you know, our opinion was that you're not pushing a use that's not allowed or extending a building and exceeds setbacks.
No, it was her.
And it would be one thing, and another thing, it's like, it's the same business that's being extended if it was a different type of industrial business that you were trying to then like wipe out and put in in this new, then we would, I'd say, like, you know, so that's why it's the gray area with its extension of the current use.
With that nonconformance that we are.
Right. And like, so, and another argument is that it's like, is more detrimental to the neighborhood and that kind of thing, for, against something like that, right? So there's.
Because there's, there's a number of industrial uses that would, you know, technically under the bylaw, be allowed.
Right, exactly. Exactly, yeah. Not, not that that's a threat or.
Yes, please, Mike.
Yeah, go ahead.
It, it, it seems to me, and I know there's a lot of controversy about it, but this is one of the more passive industrial uses of that property that can happen there. Just my opinion.
Yeah, it's, you know, we're, unfortunately, to Lee's point, like, we're stuck with this industrial zoned land plopped in this residential neighborhood, which, you know, will hopefully be addressed.
We have to respect the zoning, of course.
Right, yeah.
And we've seen, we've seen some less neighborly businesses in there so far.
Correct. Yeah, and then the other piece that we're also thinking about, too, is, you know, separate of this vote of the pre-existing non-conform use, not to get into the, the hearing piece of it, is also like the fact that, you know, we're working, that there's attempts to get this under compliance for the, the Conservation Commission piece of this that currently isn't. Yeah. So that's another layer on top of this that we're, that's also a consider. So considering that town council says that there needs to be an ANRA, or that's his recommendation? A form?
A new Form A.
Or whatever that.
Yeah, that is, well, I would say that's what our, that's what Kyle is recommending right now.
Yeah, okay.
And then I feel like I need to talk to town.
You're waiting to hear back from town council on the, the last reply. Right, so we're still waiting on this. So with that, I don't feel, I agree with Lee that I feel like we shouldn't be rushing to make a determination on whether to allow that pre-existing non-conforming use. So with that, does, do we want to move to table this, or anyone like to move, make a motion on this for now, or unless we feel ready to make a determination?
Continue on the lots.
We don't really have to continue this, but.
Table till the next meeting.
Yeah.
Do we need to schedule July?
Yeah, we're.
So that's, that's another thing we can talk about at the hearing, because this doesn't really matter for the piece, but we can open, we can talk about that when we open the, continue the, the hearing.
Okay. So I make a motion that we table this discussion on the pre-existing use for 12 Elm Street until the next meeting, given the fact that we all need more information to move forward. And, you know, and we're just, it's, it's a fluid thing, so we have information coming in, and we really just don't want to make any mistakes. So I make a motion that we, that we table the, that we table the discussion on the pre-existing until our, our next scheduled meeting, which we will determine later in the meeting.
All right. All right. Any discussion on that? Otherwise, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye, Jimmy's aye.
You are.
Mike is frozen, I think.
You have heard the neighbors' concerns, now we have the southerly concern.
Yes.
That's the next, next, next decision. But, you know, but that's.
So now we're.
Behoove you in this time that we've granted you by, you know.
But with that, well, now we're going to open that hearing, though. So that was, so we're going to, but we're going to continue the hearing for 12 to 18 Elm Street on the storage unit redevelopment. So now this is like on the project, this is not on the pre-existing non-conforming use of lots or whatever. This is based on the redevelopment there. So basically, what happened at our last meeting is you presented to us your plan. We, again, didn't feel, because there were still outstanding parts, didn't feel comfortable making a termination, mostly because we were waiting on Conservation Commission to come back with your peer review or independent review on the parcel. We did receive that, and so we've been reviewing that. And it's been our, it's, Gerard, you can speak to this, I think, too, that it, that the Conservation Commission said it was okay as long as you follow the recommendations outlined in the, what was outlined from this independent review. So with that, I thought I think clears up some of the conservation pieces. I have a couple of comments on that, but I wanted to give you an opportunity. Is there anything new that you're presenting tonight or updates to what you've learned or anything in the last?
No, other than this plan here, and I've got a full set here, includes, you know, the updates from Conservation Commission. It includes some of the recent discussions I had in the last couple of days with respect to screening. The stormwater conversation is a little bit more involved, so I do want to have that and just, you know, and we did have a conversation, so fill you in on those details. But insofar as having plans that are reflective of the Conservation Commission approval, you know, there's, there's now a split rail fence in the back of the property to avoid, you know, any further encroachment and, and trailer storage, outdoor storage was certainly part of that, you know, part of that rationale. So the idea is that, you know, you don't have access. This is conservation, and this is restoration area. And so that's been added to the plan. We did, we did just today add a hedgerow of Arbor Vity at the edge of the, the back of, at the back of 18 as a, as an additional buffer. You know, I drove by a couple of times the last couple of days, and I would just note this, that, you know, as a reference, the existing barn that sits back there now is, you know, roughly 3D stories high, maybe to the peak. These are single-story buildings and are set back further from the, you know, from where the, that barn sits. You can see where the barn is now. These, these units are further back. So, you know, there is a screening, there's a lot of, a lot of vegetation between the road and, you know, and where this starts. So we are adding more, we're not touching anything that's, that's there, but that, that has been added. Stormwater approval we got. And I think, other than, unless there's anything missing, the stormwater conversation is the only other piece to it. So, and that's a little bit more involved. And unfortunately, this, this, you know, this is one of those projects, one of those sites that, both from a zoning perspective, and I'm sure, you know, on many levels, you know, happened for whatever reason, and, you know, some of the rules got followed, some didn't. And, and unfortunately, there were never any repercussions to previous property owners or no enforcements, you know, taken by the town on either a conservation level or a planning level. So the present owners have, you know, picked up and now own a site that are trying to bring in compliance as best they can. There's a lot of issues, not only from a conservation perspective, but also from a stormwater perspective, as, you know, as many people have noted. And it's, it was a very similar conversation with Conservation Commission about, you know, how did this, you, you, you know, you've got to fix everybody else's problem now, and there's, and there's a.
They issue an order of conditions or?
They did.
A series of, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And, and with Conservation Commission and the riverfront, it really dates back to, you know, the Riverfront Act was enacted in 1996, so technically, anything after that that was not permitted is, you know, could be the responsibility of the current landowner. And the problem is that, you know, that's just not practical or feasible a lot of times. And then this is one of those instances, they're trying to comply with the current regulations and go above and beyond, but, you know, there's, there's a point where, you know, there's got to be some understanding of, of those previous actions and that, and then there's a limited amount of control they've got. So, you know, what ended up happening with the current site and this, we can see highlighted.
Can you describe what you're showing us?
So, yeah, so this is, this is the, the sites. It's been broken down, you know, we have to break it down by drainage areas to understand stormwater and where all that water is going and compare current conditions to the proposed conditions. And, you know, the general rules, we can't, you know, post flows cannot exceed peak flows, and you've got to store it, and so that's why you get detention basins. Sure. I'll stand on this side. No, no, no. And so right now, everything you see outlined here in blue goes to the south, goes up toward those properties. And that's, there, there are no controls there now. It just sheet flows, big storms, that's where, you know, the, those, you know, channels get created. There's a lot of water going there. I fully appreciate that. And in the proposed condition, anything that we're doing, sort of from the back of the existing buildings here, we're, we're cutting off and taking this to, to our, you know, design system, our engineered system. And so just by doing that, we've reduced the amount of area roughly half from, you know, what's going there. It's not stopping the water from going in that direction, but we are cutting that area in half. So that, you know, that is something that we are doing. You know, unfortunately, the challenge is that in order to do much more with this stormwater that comes off the existing site, we've got to capture it and hold it so that, that doesn't cause the, you know, the, the big intense flows that they're experiencing now and that, those flooding. In order to do that, we need to go either with a large surface basin, like we've done with the proposed condition, or put it underground. But in either case, one of those needs, it needs an overflow somewhere. There is going to be a point in time where that fills up and it's the same situation. And so we don't want to engineer a system that then doesn't have some sort of controlled overflow. And, you know, the, the challenge is, is that this is a low point of the site right now is, is where all that water leaves the, leaves the covered property. And so, you know, I did do a little bit exploring when I was out there the other day, being with Scott and Lexi, but there's, you know, so there's a, there's a drain, I want to say, somewhere in here that I think collects water from the street. And then there's another one that sort of divides the next property up that's, that's on the backside of the sidewalk. There's clearly a swale that was created to drain some of the water in that direction. I think it does okay during, you know, normal events, but during the big storms, I can certainly appreciate there's a lot of water that, you know, ultimately ends up there and has nowhere to go. And so, you know, to me, the next, you know, the next best thing would be to try to figure out a way to control that water and direct it to one of those outlets if the town agrees to that. And I don't know, I, we haven't had time to ask the question, you know, that's a DPW or an engineering question. I don't know to the extent, you know, I don't know which, which, or if any of these are, are public ownership, private ownership. We've got to do a little bit more survey to understand elevations and how deep they are. You know, there's, there's, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of area to, to make up and not a lot of, not a lot of gray change. But it certainly seems feasible, at least on the surface, that we could create, you know, some sort of berm, whether it's out of, out of earth or stone along that edge to try and redirect the water toward one of those outlet locations, inlet locations, I guess. So that was, you know, we looked at it, I looked at it in the field. We did do a little bit of, you know, a, a further delve with, with some of the topography information that we do have, and it seems feasible. You know, there's, there's vegetation there, there's fences, there's a whole bunch of stuff, and some of the work may, you know, so I think there's, there's something that can be done, it just merits further conversation. I, I think we're committed to trying to do, so I can't speak for the owners, but trying to fix it as best we can with, with what we have available to us.
Talk about feasibility of tying into the storms on the street?
I, we haven't had a chance to call, I mean, this, this was all, this all happened just yesterday.
Right.
We're all kind of.
It's, oh, yeah, this is real time.
Yeah, we have DPW be amenable to that. You know, it's the state of the paving and, you know, where it's about, it's all about the grading.
Yep. So, you know, again, we're committed to exploring it more and, and really, you know, understanding what the options are. But it's, yeah, unfortunately, we're, we've got a, you know, lousy situation, and, and, you know, we're trying to improve it as best we can. But certainly, by reducing that, the amount of area that, because this, this whole site continues to. continues to slope in that direction right now. And so we're, you know, effectively tipping, tipping the site in the other direction from the back of the existing buildings so that we, we take the stormwater to, you know, the other direction.
Any comments on what just proposed there?
I mean, I, I think that from my understanding of what ConCom did was you have, the basins are in place to accommodate, what, a hundred-year storm, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, to overflow the basins would be an extreme situation. It would, it wouldn't, it sounds to me as if they have been working with the, with the local abutters and, you know, just having an interest in this whole ConCom thing. It seemed like, it seemed like the basins were going to do a lot to alleviate the problems.
The current problems?
I think Scott said that they've been working with them and I'm sorry, I forgot the other lady's name.
Lexi, I think.
Lexi. Okay.
I just want to, so what, so for the public knows, it'll probably be in the minutes of the next ConCom meeting, but just what they, what was recommended and the conditions that were added, I'm just going to go through, and I have a question on one of them for, for you in the design. So it says, just including a revised restoration plan, including trees, tree plantings along the Mill River. Invasive plant species in herbivory control plan for the restoration areas, so it doesn't come, become overcome with invasive species in order to restore what currently needs some DLC. There, so the piece that I'm interested, and it also mentioned permanent markers or signage showing that there's the 100-foot riverfront area boundary and you said it was addressed with fence. So the piece that I'm interested in is looking and seeing, it's, it recommended limiting the size of one of the units that was kind of getting into the 100-foot area. It said either limiting the, shifting it diagonally, reducing the amount of paving. And they, that was considered a, quote, reasonable compromise. And so I'm curious if you have brought updated plans today to show that or if not, I would like to.
I haven't seen the order of conditions yet.
No, this is Fleetwood's recommendations.
Yeah.
To applying for your order of conditions.
Yes.
What will help your cause, basically? And I don't know what, we got to see what.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we did have the discussion with the Conservation Commission about that suggestion. What he was saying is because the riverfront area is, is really parallel with my pen right now, what he was suggesting is that this building get twisted to take this little corner out of it. We've got about 100 square feet. But, you know, as I pointed out, what that does is just opens up the gap between these two buildings that we then need to deal with asphalt and additional impervious area and that small, you know, it's, it's all within the amount of degraded area now. And so it didn't seem like for the additional impervious area, that 100 square feet of, you know, building was, was detriment, was more detrimental than, than making that change.
More impervious surface? Okay, so that was what was.
And they, and they seem to agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly trying to keep everything as tight as we can.
Okay. And yes, and with that, any other questions? I know there was actually some question, concern by at least President last time about signage, about rumors of a giant lit-up sign. Is that going to be the case or?
I'm certainly not aware of any giant lit-up sign.
That's going to be happening? I don't know.
The, the sign that we have designed is half the size of what the bylaws allow, my understanding. We were considering lighting it, which I understood is allowed, but we haven't done it in England.
Okay. This was something we would consider inventing, if that's something that we would.
And that, that's going to be on the existing entrance.
Just replacing the existing sign.
Yeah. Any other questions related to this plan that we have?
No, and I'll just, I, the only other comment I'll make or offer is, I know there were a bunch of concerns about traffic that we made earlier and just, there was a traffic report that we had included, just as a reference, you know, at, at peak hour with the site, with the, with the proposed site, including what is there now, a peak weekday hour generates just under 13 cars. Weekend, and this is all based on ITE, you know, standards, so this is sort of the, you know, the Bible that we have to go by. Week end, peak hour is just about 20 cars. So 20 cars an hour would be the, would be the maximum based on the.
And then just thinking about what currently or has been there was a storage unit of like almost half the size, but then other businesses operating in there that are now no longer in there.
So just based on the storage uses, previously it was, you know, weekend was about nine, nine cars an hour.
Can you help me, forgive me, I don't have the exact figures, but the amount, amount of extent, just stored units. Do you know off the top of your head?
I do not know off the top of my head.
You got to scope. How many units are there?
It's 140, I think, right now.
How many new proposed?
About, about twice that. I think we're going to have two AVs total.
Off the top of my head.
No, no, I'm not pulling you to it. I just wanted to get a rough percentage.
I think I can say like, because we haven't voted on the previous one to extend, you know, as we're waiting on the next, a piece before that, it would be silly for us to be voting on anything further on this. And it sounds like you have some more work to do a little bit on the stormwater conversations and wrapping.
Yeah, and I guess just to the extent that, you know, if, when we get to the next hearing, we're, we're ready and, and, you know, are able to move forward. I guess to, you know, I will certainly continue to have the conversation, you know, and, and I think we're, again, committed to doing it. I don't want that work necessarily to hold up the permit process. I mean, we're, we're doing, you know, above and beyond what they need to do by, you know, by, by code and by, you know, state, state standards. I just don't.
To the OOC too, to the order of conditions.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
All right, that's what we want.
So I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, if, if we're still discussing easements or having issues with the town.
Right.
DPW or something that, you know, that we'll continue to work through it, but I just don't want that to hold up, so.
Understood.
It sounds to me like they're.
So are we continuing this discussion till the next meeting?
So, yeah, the, so our next meeting is August 2nd. We don't meet in July and I would say, I think that's the next Wednesday, the first Wednesday in August.
Yes.
Yes, August. And that's 91 days from when we opened the hearing. So either, if it's amenable to either, and we're all, you're, you're going to be here August 2nd, there was a concern that he might be on vacation, but he's not. So the following week. So we could meet on the second, but there would have to be a signing of acknowledging that we're going over the 90 days if that is, is amenable to the applicant acknowledging that we're going over 90 days by one day.
Yes, we're amenable.
And Jimmy and Mike, the August 2nd works for you as well? I know it's, normally I don't have to say that, go through this, but it's vacation time generally for people, so. Jimmy, you're there, you'll be here, you're available August 2nd?
Yeah.
Okay.
End of July.
Okay, great. Okay, so with that, we have a, we continue probably?
Motion to continue our move. Do not execute.
Make a motion to continue the hearing, 12 to 18, storage units redevelopment until our next meeting on August 2nd.
A little more official there.
Gotcha.
Second?
Second.
Me with the second. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. So we'll see the continuation and hopeful resolution of this on August 2nd. Appreciate it.
Hopefully, hopefully the extra month will give us time to get all the answers from everybody, all the moving parts involved.
Yes, exactly. Thank you, Jimmy. And thank you.
Thanks, very much.
All right. And thank you, everyone who is here for that yet. Moving on to the board discussion or updates, we have a converse. I'll just wait one second until people clear the room.
No rush.
I'd say the only thing that could come up is whatever the historical piece that's out of our hands anyway.
Yeah.
No, for the, just the hearing in general, like the 12th. But that's not really.
That hasn't even been, hasn't even come up in front of us, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for your, thank you for your patience.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you so much. My wife gave me that. Thank you all.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you very much.
Hello? Hey there. We're just waiting for the room to clear out here. All right, there we go. Onto our next board discussion item, we have a Chapter 61B on Straits Road. So this is something that when there is an article that's, or an article, when there is a parcel that is in Chapter 61 and it's, goes up for sale or someone's going to purchase it, the town has the first right of refusal to kind of take a look at it and decide, you know, if we want to purchase it or not. And so that comes before us and it comes before, there's another board, it goes before to, the select board, I think, just, it goes before. And so this is just us putting it on the agenda to, to discuss, but this is a parcel that is located off of Straits Road, behind like Depot and Straits Road, I guess you could probably, it's, it's the best way to describe it. There's, it's hard to describe because it's literally a landlocked parcel plopped behind, you know, the houses there off of Straits Road.
Did you find on the drawing? Because I wasn't transparent where that, this one.
Yeah, I know.
It was referred to by lot number, it was referred to by.
Yeah, I had to go to the thing online, the assessor's site map online and it was very complicated to, yes, I think, I believe it's this, like this parcel here.
And also what is the, what is it to be Chapter 61B?
So Chapter 61B is forest, I believe. Chapter 61A is farmland. So it's a forested piece of land.
Whenever it changes hands, the town gets a.
And the town has a say on it if we want it or not. But I would say the abutter has no plans to change the use of this land. It says the Beldon family has agreed to selling it to an abutter of one of, an abutter of this parcel, doesn't say who, which is fine. And so it's just up to us to decide whether we want to like do anything with it or recommend that we do something with it or not. And so given the fact that it's a landlocked parcel plopped amongst wooded area and a buttsome farmland, I would say that's probably not in the best interest of the town.
No, it's, it's, I, there's a, there's a snowmobile trail that goes through there and it's just scraggly swampland, so unless you're into scraggly swampland.
I, I, yeah. Yeah, the last time that we've done something like this was with the Black Birch parcel that was slated to be like a, to be developed. And the right of first refusal, we came in with CPA money, using Kestrel Land Trust to buy that land, because there's a lot of other protected and preserved land on that strip. So when I saw Straits Road, I was like, oh, maybe it's somewhere around those other parcels, which you can make a stronger argument to like, try and keep it more contiguous, you know? But, yeah.
Even still, they're not.
Changes or development or anything like that, yeah. And they can't, nobody can do that with our current zoning, because it's a landlocked, drainage-free parcel. So, yeah, just wanted to take that as a learning opportunity for all of us and also put it on the, on the notice, on the here, on the agenda for us to talk about, so the public's aware of that as well. So I don't think we have to do any sort of official vote on it. It's just, we are, I would recommend that we allow this to happen, or whatever the right term would be. All right, next update for, from our assistant town planner, Janelle.
Hello. Um, so.
You've had your hands full with this.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
This is the whole learning experience.
And congratulations on wrapping up your semester.
Thank you. One year down, one to go. So I believe for August now, we're going to be hearing from, obviously, 1812 again. Additionally, it looks like there's going to be a hair salon coming our way, which should be good. This is a business that is already successful coming here and making no external changes to the, the building that they're buying, and I'm blanking on the property. What is?
It's 23 West Street.
It's the Sisters, right?
It's Sister.
It used to be the bank, right?
Yes, yep.
It's across from, it's literally across from the.
Angelic.
The auto shop we just approved in RK Miles, yeah.
Yep, so that will be coming our way too. I want to get started on design guidelines, that is like my next move.
Your summer project?
Yes, my summer project. It is hard when I'm only scheduled to be doing five hours a week and this has been quite the.
This has taken a while.
Got a set little egg timer?
Yeah.
It's like, oh, that's five hours, I'm done.
Design guideline time. But, yeah, that's, that's kind of what's going on in my court. So if anyone has any questions or requests, anything, I can.
No, we appreciate your help, for sure.
Yeah, and ensuring that this, this somewhat sticky situation that you've been dealing with, you know.
Yeah.
It's all kosher. Anything else?
Um, I don't think so, no, yeah.
I'm going to take this time, because this didn't get on the agenda, but I thought I mentioned it, but just to let you know about the comprehensive plan committee, I think I can.
Oh, yeah.
Do a generic update on that.
Is there a meeting Saturday?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So there, because I didn't see any of you at the virtual meeting, hopefully you'll be able to pop in, in person, to the in-person one, the Saturday from 8:30 to noon at Black Birch Vineyard. You can come hungry, there's going to be breakfast and lunch if you come close to lunchtime. So come hungry, leave happy and with your head and heart full of ideas for Hatfield. This is a, yeah, and so this is like a, it's informal, there's going to be like stations, think like science fair kind of type thing, where you can like go to each station and learn about the different things that we've been learning about at the, at the comprehensive plan committee, like some of the climate impacts that could happen, like the 100-year floods are going to be more like 80-year floods kind of thing, you know, they're going to change all of that, that kind of stuff. Talking about land use, like looking on a map and saying like, where do you wish we had more sidewalks in Hatfield? Where do you wish we had more hiking paths or things like that? Different stations and things that you can be interactive with. And then there's going to be three different community conversation, like more conversations that you can opt in or out of. It's pretty informal. We're just hoping to get a lot of townspeople to come out and give their input, because more input, the better, as we build the updated master plan, so.
That's great.
Yeah, and then you can buy some wine, too. Maybe not at 8:30 in the morning, but you can if you want. Get those ideas flowing.
It's a Saturday, not a Sunday.
So, yeah, I really would encourage you all to go, especially since we're on the planning board. This is going to directly impact us.
Yeah, I thought the conversations we had last time were, it was, I thought it was enlightening to hear what people want, so.
Yeah, they're going to be like smaller versions of, more digestible versions of those conversations, I think.
And at a nice location. I haven't been there yet, so.
Great, yeah, if you want to stop, that would be great, stop by. Also, you're probably way over your hours this month, although it's a new month, it's a new month, new week.
It's a new day.
We're going to burn all your five hours at a winery on a Saturday.
I'd say, I'd say you don't have to go for the whole three and a half hours, but I'd say expect to come for like an hour. And you'd be able to get through everything, have some meaningful conversations and be able to eat some food. So Prospect Middle Farm is catering, they do some great stuff. So, yeah.
Cool.
And with that, we have the last item on the agenda. Jimmy, are you still there with us?
I am. I am.
Okay, it looks like Mike's been having some connectivity issues. So with that, our last item is our vote to reorganize. So after every election season, we have, congratulations, John, on being elected officially.
It was pretty tight, it was neck and neck, me and, me and blank.
You. So I have a...
Lot of votes for blank, a lot of votes, very confidence inspiring.
So with that, every year, you know, because there's five of us, one of us is on the ballot every year, or one of our positions is on the ballot every year, I should say, and so after that time, it's, we have to go and vote to reorganize for our chair and our alternate chair, and for our CPC, our community, there's two CPCs in town, very confusing now, Community Preservation Commish, Committee Representative, and then, I don't, the other one is the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, I thought, like, appointee, but like, they haven't really been engaging.
I am trying to engage, let me tell you.
Great, cool.
We pay for them.
Yes.
So that is a, something I'm trying to...
Get a, have a speed, speed dial, get on their speed dial kind of thing, okay.
Should imagine that in my updates.
So with that vote to reorganize, we need to decide on a chair, an alternate chair. We also, like, we can do this today, we also can take some time to think about some of this and vote the next one if you, if, if we don't feel comfortable.
Why change course midstream?
All right, or what do you...
Do you think we're plotting to take over the chair position?
My thought is we have at least another year left before we, before our complete takeover is imminent. I, I, I think that you and Jimmy have done, have done well, and there's, and given the, given the age and maturity of the board, that if we keep the status quo, it would be fine with me.
Any other thoughts by anyone, Jimmy?
If Jimmy's willing to remain the...
I'm good with peep, I'm good with keeping where we are.
That's, that's...
I think right now, things are operating about as good as we can operate.
That's perfect.
I second that emotion, okay.
That sounds confidence inspiring, too. Yeah.
You just said we're optimal excellence.
Go ahead, Jamie.
That, that, that is the tone of confidence.
As good as we can.
I know, thank you. Yeah, so I, I will say, thank you, I'm humbled by your thinking that I'm, I should remain in this position. I will say, though, I will do this for one more year, and then I would like to pass the torch on to someone else. So I'm just stating that now, let the record show, no, I don't know.
Who's on the block next year?
I don't know.
Who's up for, is that you, Mike?
No, I think Mike's...
No, it's me, Jimmy.
Jimmy's up to, Jimmy's on the, up for election next year, and then I am, I think, the year after that. So I'm not saying like I'm gonna step down from the planning board, but I would, I am happy to take you all under my wings for another year, make you, you know, then push you out the nest next year, okay?
We have a lot of maturing to do. Thankfully, John's the man for the job next year.
It's really just facilitating meetings, and then sometimes stressful things happening in between meetings, but, you know, I'm really selling it, I'm really selling it.
Okay, so do we need to vote on that officially?
Yes, we do.
So I would, do we make a motion on that?
We also have to do CPC.
That's what I said, yep, CPC, too.
I'll, I'll, I'll stay on that if, if, unless anybody wants it.
Hold the course, hold the course.
And then I believe Mike was our Pioneer Val, our PDPC rep, if...
He was.
Yeah, so I don't know...
Is Mike still there?
No.
This might be Mike, hold on. Hello? Hello?
I'm here, I don't hear Mike.
Yeah, all right.
We can wait to vote on that and see if that's, also, like, his attendance, I don't know, I don't want to speak for him, I don't want to say yes or no that he wants to...
Why don't we hold off on that since it's kind of a...
Yeah. But Janelle, when you talk to them, it would be great for them to say, like, hey, have you had meetings with these representatives? Because I don't even know if they, I know with COVID that they weren't really holding meetings, so I don't know if that's a very active, because there's usually a representative from each planning board that makes up and they have these meetings, so if and when you talk to the PDPC.
So I didn't know that, so they have... So our representative would have meetings with them regularly, or?
It's like a council kind of thing. Hi, Mike. Oh, hello. We were wondering, Mike, the Pioneer, we're voting on reorganizing right now. There's a recommendation for us to stay the course, meaning I stay the chair, Jimmy stays alternate chair, Lee stays on the, the Community Preservation Committee, and then there's a question about the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission appointee, or I don't know what the right term is. You've, you've been in that role, have they been active, or what, have they been doing stuff?
They've, they've been active online, they haven't had any in-person meetings.
Okay.
I'll stay, I'll stay on it and be on the committee.
Okay.
Okay, and have you been going to, like, we'll have to bring back some updates from those meetings, I'd love to know what's going on there.
Mike, do you talk to Doug or Ken? Do you know? Or like, when, when? Or maybe neither?
Ken.
Ken, okay.
I've had the most interaction with Ken.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so we need to vote on that?
Yeah, we need to make a motion for all those.
Okay, so I make a motion that we accept the positions as we've discussed, remaining the same as last year.
What, yeah, we should probably name what those are.
Oh, with, with Chairman Slish, Co-Chairman Tarr, myself, David Bell on the CPC, and Michael Pashuk to the PVP.
C.
C.
Second.
I'm second, Ed.
All right, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We all vote for ourselves, like, anyway, yes, passing.
Yeah.
Passing.
Okay.
We're all reorganized.
Democratic society.
Now it's time to approve minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. The first one is the April meeting that I was not at, and Mike was not at, so we cannot vote at, vote on this. Jimmy, Lee, and John can vote on these.
I don't see anything that I see every day. Did you see anything, John?
No, no, I had a chance to read them over. They seemed precise.
A little dry, as John said.
I don't have it, you guys gotta tell me if they're okay.
Yeah, I, I really don't, I don't see anything glaring, so. I make a motion that we accept the April 5th meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Jimmy?
Aye. Aye.
The April 5th meeting, meeting minutes are approved. Now we move to May 3rd, which are a little more comprehensive. The only thing that I saw, I mean, there was like a name misspelling, but, there were six or two names. The Mickey Sanderson, you had an E at the end of Mickey in one of the spellings, but you spelled it correctly later on, so. Stylistic thing on the second page in the middle of the page.
I see it. Is there an E or no E?
There's no E. And then the last piece of the board discussion, it says, the last sentence, or second to the last sentence, Janelle frankly would like to see these voted into the town bylaws. I would say the zoning bylaws, because the town bylaws are different. Or added to, voted into, however that is, but, other than that.
I make a motion, we accept the May 3rd minutes with the revisions stated by our chair.
Any second?
What second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And is Mike there? Are you muting, is he muted?
Mike, do you accept the minutes? Yeah, I'm over there.
Okay, all right. So our next meeting, as we mentioned, is August 2nd. We will have the continued hearing on 12 and 18, 12 and 18 Elm Street, discussion on probably the pre-existing reforming use, maybe the salon coming in, and we'll have to sign the, something stating that we're going over 90 days by a day.
Looking for that Form A.
And the A and R Form A situation will be another piece, really...
And that, like, has to happen before we can do anything.
Right. Yeah. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
I second.
All right, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned at 7 o'clock.